Required specifically to be included in the comp plan. But typically, a comp plan provides background on demographics. The land use plan is, of course, a key component. The economy, employment, housing, infrastructure such as water, sewer, energy, transportation, the natural resources, cultural resources like historic sites and social involvement, and then community facilities, health and safety. The degree to which these topics are covered can vary depending on the needs and guidance of the community. So all of these will be covered, but they might be covered differently depending on what municipality we're working with. Next slide. So this is just a little illustration of generally what a comprehensive planning process looks like. So for Lower Gwinnett, we began in early 2023, meeting with the steering committee. We identified issues early on, and that was part of the first public outreach component. So we had a community survey, we had an open house in October of 2023, and that was really meant to identify what the key issues are for the township and for the residents. And then we continued working. I met with the steering committee over the next year to continue the background research and and dig a little bit deeper into some of those identified issues. We also have a focus area in the comp plan, that's the Bethlehem Pike corridor. I have a site on that later on in this presentation. And then just this past October, we had the second open house, which was the second part of the bigger public outreach element for the for the plan. We also had a follow-up survey for any folks that were not able to make the open house that had draft recommendations that we have identified. So I should say that as part of the meeting with the steering committee and reviewing the background documents, we've also drafted recommendations that are based on the feedback from the steering committee, planning principles, and also integrating the feedback that we got from the from the public. So next slide. So part of this presentation, I just want to give a brief overview of how how the public outreach went, what kind of feedback we heard, and then what we're doing to integrate some of the responses that we've received. So for the first, I guess this is a list of all the public engagement activities that we've done, which I've just reviewed in the first, the previous slides. So we had, there was a Fall Fest that I attended with one of my colleagues. We had a few different surveys that were out and circulating to the public. We received over 500 responses to the first survey. That was just a really big overview of all of the different topics that are covered. And then we had two different open houses. And then the survey with the draft goals and recommendations. And then the township has been updating the the website with information on the comp plan as needed. Next slide. Okay. So like I said before, the first part of the public engagement was really meant to get a better understanding of what issues were most important to the residents. So this is just a couple of little data points from the respondents of the first survey. So 94% of the people were residents of the township. There were some people that just were answering the survey, they might work in the township, they don't live here. And from this initial survey and from the first open house, we identified some of the issues that were that were identified as really important for the people that were answering, and that's the preservation of open space, recreation, the redevelopment of underutilized commercial properties. And there are other issues too, walkability, I'll talk about that in a minute, was also identified as one of the important issues. And Bethlehem Pike kept on coming up over and over in conversation, so that's one of the reasons why that we are focusing that in the comprehensive plan. Next slide. Okay. So the first, between the first and the second open houses, we had a year. It was October 23 to October 24. And during that that time period, we continued to do background research on the topics. The steering committee met. We, as I said before, worked to identify some of the the most important goals that we should be working towards, and I've been kind of finalizing recommendations and crafting a vision statement based on all of these discussions. So at the second open house, we brought very high-level recommendations and goals to the public. They weren't getting into the weeds too much because there's a lot of minutia that goes into some of these comprehensive planning elements, so the what was presented to the public at the open house was really high-level recommendations for the main topics that are covered in the comprehensive plan. So they're listed up here on this on this presentation slide as the future land use and vision, community institutions, that includes that that topic of community health and facilities, housing, transportation, open space and environmental sustainability. So you can tell that these are very big categories that were kind of lumped together to make it easier to be able to understand what kind of issues were rising to the surface for people and what they thought would be the most important to to highlight in the plan. Okay, so. Yeah, so the next slide shows the draft vision statement. People did have a chance a few different times to review this draft statement in a survey, two different surveys online, and also during the open house. So we had, what's it I say here? 85% of people either agreed or strongly agree with the draft vision statement. But they also had opportunities to provide specific comments if they wanted to address something that wasn't brought up, or if there was something that they disagreed with, they could provide, you know, substantive feedback and not just yes or no answer to this. So I I wanted to stress that this is still a draft. We're still going to refine this some more based on what we hear tonight and and what I hear from the steering committee when we meet next month. So I'm not sure if you wanted to have a chance to read it now or to review it later on after this presentation. Yes, sorry. Move on, should I move on?
I'm ready.
Okay. Okay. Pardon? Okay. All right, so the next slide is the future land use map. And I'll briefly describe this. The future land use map is really the foundation of the comprehensive plan. It lays out the different broad land use categories for the township. Some of these are pretty self-explanatory, the low-density residential is a predominant part of the township, that that bright yellow color. There's also medium-density residential and high-density residential. Green, the bright green is the recreation and open space. Institutional properties are the same. I want, I guess I should just point out that the biggest change is this town center mixed-use district, which is this kind of hot pink color. And that's along Bethlehem Pike and some key properties or key areas in the township near the train station, near 309. And this is meant to be a mixed-use district focused along some of these areas where we're doing that focus area study. It's meant to encourage residential, but also mixed uses. And there are also some areas that are around the train station that we think might be appropriate for that kind of, those kinds of land uses. I also circled the two different train stations. So they're not identified as a transit-oriented category per se, but it's a quarter-mile radius around the train station where potential potential development could be considered in the future. It would be meeting some of the sustainability goals and housing goals for the township, and also from the county's perspective, that would be a an appropriate place for for more development near transit. Also highlighted are the greenway overlays. They're just around all of the, all of the streams and creeks that are in the township just to ensure that they are protected and there's a strong riparian corridor to to ensure the health of the waterways and meet those sustainability goals. Okay, next slide. Okay.
Can we just go back for one second?
Yeah, sure, of course.
I'm sorry, I was still looking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Agriculture, there is, there isn't any, I was just trying to match up agriculture. There truly isn't any.
Yeah, there, there are a couple of parcels that, again, still draft. And there are a couple of parcels that we have in our county data that are identified as agriculture, so if
Is it the homestead exemption? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Those are the only two. I was just trying to find them through.
Oh, yeah, there, there are three shown.
Okay. Sorry.
That's okay. And then if there are any questions about anything on here, I can always take a closer look and and make those changes.
We, and I did notice that we have one, two areas of high-density residential. Assuming that's the meadows down there?
Yes.
And then that's the hunkel?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and those are just what's currently classified as high-density residential now.
I was going to ask, are we going to define what that, what that is?
Yeah, there are, in the plan that defines flushes out the different categories for the land uses. And of course, this is, there's a lot of this based on the existing land use, and then just a few areas where we've made some changes based on on some of the other goals for the township. But like I said, this is still a draft, and so there is room for discussion, and if there are some properties that we think or some areas generally, not specific properties, but just areas generally that we think should be amended, then we can, this is a good opportunity to make that change. Also, if there are properties or specific areas that should be targeted for preservation, or, you know, to be acquired for future preservation, that can also be articulated in this map.
Okay. What, I have a question. The, I think it's red, general commercial?
Yes.
Along what looks like Septa line there? What is that that's really close to Upper Gwinnett?
Oh, that square there, that is a commercial property. I'm trying to recall the exact business. I think it's a landscaping. Yes, a nursery, thank you. Yeah. Okay, that's all.
Okay, thank you, sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. Okay, so the next slide is walkability. And this was identified over and over again as a priority for the comprehensive plan throughout every phase of the public outreach, and with the steering committee, this was this was brought up as as an important thing that we should talk about. And not just for connecting trails, but also walkability for people to be able to access services, be able to walk to different neighborhoods, to be able to walk to different commercial areas, this was an important thing. That, and also Bethlehem Pike, and those overlap in a lot of areas too. So I just put this up here to illustrate some of the, some of the ways that people were expressing this desire for improved walkability. On the right, there is, this is just a picture of the poster we had at the second open house, and it has some pictures of different traffic calming strategies. And not just to improve walkability by adding trails and sidewalks, but by making roads safer generally in some of the residential areas where there were some concerns about speeding cars and and stuff like that. Circled on the map are the properties, not properties, excuse me, the school, just school area, Spring House intersection, and the train stations where some of the important areas for focusing those safety improvements. Next slide. So I I put this slide in here to illustrate a little bit of the process for how we identified some of the elements of the Bethlehem Pike focus area, which is still in the works, where we'll be bringing some more information to the steering committee. But to begin with, we had a poster with the map, and we had, this is, the left picture is from the first open house, it was a chance for people to just open-ended say what kind of stuff that they wanted to see along Bethlehem Pike, what they envisioned for the future of Bethlehem Pike. And from that, we were able to refine some of the notes and details and think about how we would display that information in the plan. And then in the third picture on the right is the poster from the second open house. And that outlines two, the two squares on the map. Actually, Jamie, could you go to the next slide, please? There's a bigger picture of that. Yeah. There are two squares that highlight a couple of properties that we're using as as test properties effectively to illustrate design concepts that would that would be appropriate, we think, for some of the potential for redevelopment in the future on Bethlehem Pike. And then we also circled some areas that we thought could be identified for pedestrian safety improvements, such as mid-block crossings or signalized intersections, or just general safety improvements at intersections. And those are circled. So in terms of the design stuff, there are a bunch of pictures of buildings and some little renderings of different types of buildings that are meant to show, or it was meant to elicit from people reactions on what they liked, what they didn't like. Think about the kind of development that we would want to see in the future. And then from this plan, we'll hopefully be able to use the designs that we generate for these properties as guidelines for any zoning updates that are implemented later and later on. So if there's a development that is desirable, what kind of zoning changes can be made to make that happen? So in addition to the building design concepts, we also have recommendations for roadway improvements to improve safety and walkability on Bethlehem Pike.
I have a question. So in this general plan, you are suggesting that there could be support for mixed-use buildings and more residential along Bethlehem Pike?
Correct.
How is that implemented? I mean, because these are all private properties.
Yeah. Well, we certainly can't force people to leave their property, but we're hoping that by making any appropriate zoning changes, whatever goes in in the future will will be in that same kind types of, you'll see those types of uses come in. You'll see that kind of building design come in. The, the goal is long-term, so this might not happen in the next two years or three years or five years, but in the future, when properties do turn over and they're redeveloped, then ideally it would be done in a way that is attractive, is adding value to the township. And that's what we're hoping to to do, to illustrate in these, in this plan.
Okay, well, so would there, I guess, along with the zoning changes, you would have a conversation with the PennDOT about redesigning that road?
Yes, and that has been expressed by the steering committee to that, you know, the the need to to work with with PennDOT on this, but my impression, and in speaking with my colleagues who are transportation planners, is that PennDOT is much more open to working with municipalities than they used to be in terms of making these improvements, and they do have bike and pedestrian coordinated coordinators, so they, they are a little bit more progressive in terms of making those, those types of changes, and more open to doing mid-block crossing.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
The recommendations you're making, or these are the comments and reactions you heard from the public?
Well, I guess it's a little bit of both. So the slide before this, I I wrote a couple of things about the design, saying, basically describing what we heard people liked. And so we're still working on this. We haven't finalized the designs for these yet. We're going to be meeting with the steering committee in the next couple of months to to review them. So the reactions that we heard from people were that they preferred to have roofs that were sloped, like the picture, the example that's on Bethlehem Pike down the way where that, that painted property. That was brought up as as an example that people really like to see. What we're showing here is a mixed-use, two different mixed-use buildings. And they would be brought up closer to the street, and there would be more activation of the streetscape. I think that's the main thing that that we would suggest. In terms of the height, it was, you know, expressive, they, people didn't like the more than three stories appearance. However, if from our perspective, there are a lot of design strategies that can be implemented that would help to reduce any oppressive feeling that a larger building might, might create in a corridor. So anyway, what I'm trying to say is there's a lot of wiggle room here, we're not done with this, this is not a final plan, so my final design, so I'm happy to have that discussion. Okay. And in this slide, I just have a couple of pictures from a recent winner of a Montgomery Award, awardee from the, what is it? It's King of Prussia, it's First Avenue, King of Prussia. They installed a mid-block crossing, and I included this in here as an example of a mid-block crossing in a kind of similarly sized road just to illustrate the kind of improvement that could be done on Bethlehem Pike. Different context, but it illustrates the kind of crossing that could be installed that would make pedestrians a little bit safer to cross the street. So we're still working on that, that part of the, the design, but that's forthcoming.
I have another question.
Sure.
So if we can, yeah, see this. Is there the possibility of taking out some of that middle turn lane and putting in a median there?
That's one of the things that we're going to look at more closely. Yeah, because I, my understanding is that there was a road diet some years ago to to make a turn lane down the center of Bethlehem Pike, and it's one lane in both in each direction. But there do seem to be opportunities for adding some greenery along Bethlehem Pike, so we're going to look into that further. Is that something that you would like to see? Is that where you're?
Oh, sure. I think there's a lot of potential for Bethlehem Pike. And many, many improvements could go into that area, but just making it more aesthetically pleasing with medians and street trees and wide sidewalks, no fences. I'm sure you'll get all these suggestions.
Okay, well, that's all that I have. What's, what's next? We will continue to meet, I will continue to meet with the steering committee to review the draft recommendations and refine them to further refine that Bethlehem Pike focus area. And after that, they'll review the the draft plan, and we'll start to move through the adoption process once that is reviewed.
Any additional questions from the board? On behalf of the, on behalf of the board, I would like to say thank you so much for coming to present to us, but for compiling all the information and making it easy to understand and, and I guess relatable, I think we did a wonderful job as far as preparing the two open houses and getting feedback and ensuring at every opportunity that the public was involved. So just thank you so much, we appreciate it. Are there any, I don't know if there are any comments from the public? None? Okay. Thank you so much, Claire.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Next up on our agenda, we have consideration and discussion potentially about a zoning hearing board application for 412 Plymouth Road. One of our zoning, are you prepared to give us a little bit of an overview on 412? Anyone? The application, it wasn't in our packet, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
So there is a zoning hearing board application that was submitted for 412 Plymouth Road. And they are asking for a series of variances that will facilitate the, a subdivision where they'll be creating a flag lot. And one of the main variances that they're seeking is relief for the width of the access strip to the flag, which prior was allowed to be 25 feet, but back in 2023, the Board of Supervisors amended the ordinance requiring a width of 50 feet. And they're asking for reduction to be 25 in order to be able to create the flag. The, the fire marshal has concerns about the the width and the ability to get a fire truck back to a parcel that's that far off of the main road and is that narrow. So some of his concerns are kind of, I guess, I guess, before the, the discussion before the board is whether or not the board also feels that they have concerns with this application, and if they would want to discuss the possibility of of opposing it, formally opposing it, and sending Neil in opposition of the application.
I think the major consideration is, is that we did pass an ordinance back in 2023, widening the side yard to 50 feet.
The access width, yeah.
Yeah. I gotta tap back. And so this would, they're asking for relief.
Yes. And they're asking for a couple other variances as well, but they're all related to the subdivision of this parcel. Which they, they haven't applied for a subdivision yet. They're waiting to see, I guess, if they get, if they can get the relief that they need to be able to subdivide.
Are there any questions from the board?
No, I, I think if the fire marshal has some concerns about reducing the width of that driveway, I would defer to his opinion, also our ordinance regulations.
Anyone else? Anyone, anybody in the poll have any comment or question? So I think we have the, our, it directly conflicts with our ordinance, and they're, they're asking for that relief. I'd like to make a motion to authorize our solicitor to, I guess, impose the, the ordinance, or to oppose specifically their request for relief at 412 Plymouth Road, is there a second? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Is that explicit enough? Mr. Stein, or do you need?
Works for me.
All right. Next up, we have consideration of Resolution 2024-33, I'm going to turn it over to our solicitor.
This is a consideration of Resolution 2024-33, which authorizes the filing of a declaration of taking. By way of background, when a municipality would like to acquire property, usually the first step is an attempt to reach an amicable agreement with the property owner. If that fails, the municipality has the power of eminent domain pursuant to the Pennsylvania Eminent Domain Code and the Second Class Township Code. And there's a specific procedure set forth in the Eminent Domain Code about how the power of eminent domain is to be exercised. And the first step is typically the adoption of a resolution authorizing the filing of a declaration of taking. Once the declaration of taking is filed, absent something extraordinary, the township immediately acquires title to the property, and the only issue after that is the amount of just compensation to be paid to the property owner. So Resolution 2024-33 accomplishes the first step in the process, which is authorizing the filing of the declaration of taking. And there is no time limit for the filing of the declaration of taking. It's always possible for the township and the property owner to continue discussions even after this resolution.
We're, are we on the record? No?
Yes.
John, did you want to come up and give us a bit of background about the parcel and the information?
Yes, thank you. So I want to just kind of walk through how we came to looking at 1201 Summie Town as being the correct place for a new public works facility. Jamie, which is the next slide, please? So going to just quickly start by talking about our Public Works Department led by Fred over here. And all the different things they do, because I think it's critical to understand their functions, to understand why the space they need is what it is. So you're talking about, you know, some of the things I think people see a lot, like plowing our roads, salting, things like that. Things like, you know, maintaining the grounds at our parks and all the field maintenance that they do. But then there's also all the work they do on our sewer lines and our pump stations, and making sure that our stormwater inlets are clear. They'll repair new ones, and then also, when a storm is coming, they're the ones that are clearing them out to prevent flooding and things like that. We see them out kind of in the background sometimes at our community events, like Fall Fest, those big celebrations that we have. But then they're also making sure that this township building is working smoothly. They're also going and making sure that the vehicles for all of the police departments They're also going and making sure that the vehicles for all of the police department and their own are running smoothly. There's a lot going on that these guys are doing day in and day out. And because of that, there is a demand to have the right kind of equipment and facilities for that. Jamie, could you do the next slide? So in 2022, before I came on board, a strategic plan was undertaken to really look at what would the Public Works team need to get their job done really effectively. At present time, there are five different locations around the township where we have equipment and materials stored. What that means is that when the Public Works team goes out to do a job, they don't just get in their truck, grab the material that's in there and move. They can they often have to move between multiple locations at the beginning of the day and at the end of the day. And talking to Fred and looking at his team, he said on average, it's about 45 minutes in the morning and 45 minutes at night. Now, that doesn't necessarily sound like a ton by itself, but if you turn that into one person, that would be 10 weeks of full-time work in a year that is essentially being wasted going between these different locations to get things prepped to even go to do their jobs. So it's inefficient, and you can kind of see how they're spread out on the map there. And I have some pictures to go for the next couple here about how things are looking pretty crowded and some of the facilities really need some upgrades. But on the crowded, one of the things I do want to point out is that the the police were recently looking for a space where they have a locked area to store a vehicle, and we are out of room to even do something like that that is really needed for the police department, too. Perfect. So this series of pictures is actually from this building here, basically below us right now. So here, the township building, they are parking their vehicles using every inch of space possible. They're storing things in rafters along the sides of the walls. There really is barely an inch of room. I mean, if you look at the middle picture here, you cannot open those doors very far to get like, you know, a normal-sized human in and out of them. I think I've heard stories. Some people are going through the windows to get out of those vehicles when they're parked. And, you know, do that with a vehicle that size is actually pretty impressive skill. It's not necessary. Seriously, seriously, it's impressive. It has. But bottom line, this place is maxed out. As we get on the process here, I'm going to explain that we've looked at rearranging the township building, things like that, and bottom line is it's maxed out. Could you do the next one? Now we're going to shift over to the 917 Bethlehem Pike or 904 Penland Pike, depending on the address you're looking at property. And once again, bottom line is we're out of room. They're storing in in every area they can. The buildings that they have there, this is where you start to get into the needing upgrades and repair. It's a little hard to see, but the middle truck on the top right picture was actually too long for the way that building was constructed, that vacuum truck. So there's actually an addition that our Public Works team did to expand out that one bay to keep that longer for that, to keep those vehicles inside, to get that vacuum truck inside. So they've really been working hard with what they have to make it work. Can you go next one, Jamie? So we're staying at 917. The other problem is not only have they used every inch of space, but we're already storing a lot of things outdoors. And of course, this is not necessarily the most pleasing thing to look at, but it's also really bad for the equipment life. And, you know, as the teams, you know, needing to replace things faster is not really where we want to go with this, including all of our plows. Good next one, Jamie. And staying on 917 again, if you look at the picture on the right with that is the only bathroom on site that I like to point out. But the other lot part is right above the porta potty, there's a line that looks a little rusty in there. That is our salt shed, and the salt has actually eaten away at the metal. And the different colors you see are road signs affixed to the inside of the salt shed to keep it close so that there's not any more moisture getting in there. And then, as you see, some of the other stuff like our our gas pump and things, you can kind of see pretty quickly there's a lot of stuff that needs upgrades or replacement if we're going to continue to use that space. Go ahead, next one, please. So what do they really need? Well, what also came out of the strategic plan was essentially a list of needs. From a functional perspective, they need everything from your regular facilities that you would have for your team, like, you know, offices, more bathrooms, restrooms, things like that. But then also the bigger things like the the salt shed that needs replacing. They also need things like some bunks and showers so that when they're doing overnight shifts, particularly with plowing and salting, they have a place that they can stay. We have lots of other things on here. I won't go through this entire list exhaustively, but a lot of different functions that they don't have space to use right now. The other part that becomes really important to consider here, too, is that we don't right now have a true backup place to run township operations if this building is not usable. So this also becomes a second location where we can do things like that. And as your emergency management coordinator, I would be remiss not to mention that part as an important part of our continuity of operations planning. Thanks, Jamie. Thanks. Now, again, this is also part of the strategic plan back from 2022. What the team then did was they said, all right, based on that amount of needs and the number of vehicles that they have and future planning, somewhere in the neighborhood of not at least nine, 10 acres is really going to be necessary to put together the kind of space you need for this. So that team literally took that map up there and mapped out all 10-acre parcels across the township. Now, that doesn't mean they were all usable, so a lot of them got written off the list very quickly. A, if they had a viable use, the idea was we weren't looking at taking places or anything like that that were already in use and, you know, thriving. Several of them are dedicated open space, so they got taken off right away. And others had deed restrictions. So if we look at some of our park spaces that we've acquired, we can't put a township building on a lot of our park spaces because of deed restrictions for how we acquired them. That took a lot of stuff off the table really quickly. And when we started looking at, or they, I should say, they started looking at the other parcels that were on there, most of them were incredibly close to residences on one side, and the shapes of the parcel meant that you would have these very oddly shaped buildings that would either be on one side very close to residents or basically the size of a shed in the middle to keep a decent offset, so you weren't too close to anybody else. What that boiled down to is right in the middle of your map in bright red is the square 1201 was really by far the most viable candidate for where you could put a new facility. Jamie, can you hit the next one? So fast forward a little bit of time, and we brought in architect on board, GKO, and we said, all right, we know that this is our most likely site that's going to work. We still want to go through and really do a feasibility and needs analysis. A, we want to validate what we think we know so far, and then we want to see what could we really do with the site? How could we really get our our operations laid out that is going to work really well for Fred and his team? So they looked at six different combinations that included space on 1201, existing township properties, like redoing that 917 Bethlehem Pike site, redoing the township building site, things like that. And basically, things started again falling off the eligibility list very quickly. Huge, huge one was vehicle circulation. Fred's team drives large vehicles, often with trailers on them, and being able to make the turns in the radius safely becomes a really important piece of what they're doing. Again, closer to residential areas, we're trying to avoid things like that. In the end, we came out what was basically an ideal layout. If we have a blank canvas, what would we want this thing to look at? That's what this study came up with, and that's what I'm going to show you in a second here. The other part that really, a couple other benefits that come from this is if we move Public Works to a new facility, the police then has a lot more room to work with some of the things we talked about earlier with their needs. We have the backup emergency operations for all township operations. And this study also is really beneficial. It came out with a lot of planning documents we can use for financial planning and things like that. So what we can do is, once we get land in place, we can move on immediately to the design phase of this project, once we have that that land identified. So this is this is the piece that we're looking at at 1201 that really came to be what we consider an ideal candidate from the perspective of the operations team, Public Works. We've had our civil engineering team working on it and our architectural team working on it. Basically, to orient everybody a little bit, we're looking at across the, basically across the street from where we are now, the shopping plaza of Spring House Village. You have the giant shopping center, and Moore Drive is kind of going straight back through there at the traffic light right here at the corner. And when Moore Drive stops and there's that chain going across, this would be across into there immediately to the right. The idea being is that we are parked, we would park the building against a existing commercial building where there are existing commercial deliveries and tractor-trailers coming in, and that we would have an offset from any residents or anybody that is anywhere near there, at least 400 feet from anything else that's there. The building itself would be, oh, sorry, the parcel that we'd be looking at would be about 10.4 acres that would cover everything in that red area. And we're looking at about a 40,000 square feet of enclosed buildings, which would be over two buildings, and then 4,200 square feet of covered areas. And that's basically storage areas for materials. That's where your fuel area is going to be, where the the both the police and Public Works are going to go fill up their vehicles, things like that. And Jamie, if you could hit that one more time, that's what the actual building, that we're going to zoom in on this in a second, see more detail. But you can basically see there's two buildings there. There's one that's long, along the length of the property, and then a shorter one to the bottom right side of the image. And then on the left corner, kind of that west corner, that's where things like the salt sheds and things like that and the gas pump and all would be. Just a quick pause. Any questions before I get into the detail of what these concept layouts, and I will stress concept, are getting into? All right. Thank you, Jamie. All right. So this is a little more zoomed in. So again, the the giant foods is to the right of this, and then Moore Drive is to the south. The the big circle you see in the middle is representative of the turning radius that would be needed here to get the trucks to be able to turn around. One of the things we want to do for safety here is have as little backing up as possible. It's the safest way for the the team to be traveling around. It also causes the least noise because you don't have the backup beepers going on as frequently. So that back building, the long one, is almost entirely garages. And the idea from this concept is that it's garages that have doors on both sides, so they are pull-throughs. So again, you're not backing up for any of that. So you need enough room in the front and the back so that you can kind of pull through and go around those. That area would also encompass where our mechanic would work, a wash bay so that we can start getting the salt off of those trucks and taking care of it in environmentally responsible way. And on the ends, there is some room for future expansions, that we wouldn't be building the site out completely if we ever needed to in the future. We could add on without having to use more land or pave and things like that. The building on the bottom right, that's what we've generally called our human building. That's going to be where the things like the bunks, the showers, the meeting rooms, the offices are. There's still a good bit of storage in there, too. And in in the center, what looks kind of like parking spaces there in the yellow, those are more garage spaces that we would have for smaller vehicles. That's going to be for more normal pickup trucks and things like that. The fuel depot is the square under the circle in the middle there. Again, that's where both police and Public Works would be fueling up, just like they are right now at the 917 site. And then on the left, you have your salt storage, your brine, and then, you know, plow blades and things like that going across the site. One of the things that the architect was very aware of is that we wanted to do our best to keep the sound from bothering anybody around us. So what they did was the way these buildings are positioned, anytime that there would be a likely need to back up, it's contained within kind of that U shape of the structures that are there, so that we're kind of keeping that sound to that internal courtyard and giving ourselves as much buffer and sound dampening from the actual buildings themselves as possible before it's going to go out beyond our own site. So it was a very deliberate portion of the design when we were bringing this up to our architects. The only other things I'll just point out on here really quickly is that there would also be two entrances. The one closer to the giant in this case in this concept would be where the public would go and would also kind of all of us that are driving normal vehicles would go. And the second entrance would be kind of the business end of it, where Fred's team would be using the large equipment and that the police would be going in and out of so that there are separate operations, separate kind of traffic flow to avoid any problems. Questions on this site layout? Next one, Jamie. This is a little more detail, one that it looks a lot better when you zoom in on it and you can read it, but this is literally laying out the outlines you can see there for all of the different trucks and equipment that the architect did to show how everything would fit in the site, but basically kind of just re-showing the layout a bit here. The next one. And these, again, I stress that we are at a draft design concept stage here, but the architect wanted to give us some thoughts on what this could look like in terms of a little bit of coloring, the sloped roofs, which we just heard about in the comprehensive plan, actually. And just basically how we get this thing set up for success so that it can, it'll look professional, it will be a new facility, and I think it will really represent Laura and Gwynn well. Here, next one, Jamie. The other interesting point here that you can look at is that this is only one floor in these buildings. There would not be a second story. We need high ceilings for a lot of vehicles and things like that. But there would be, if you look in the bottom bottom image to the left, you can see where they drew in a couple of people there. There would be some elevated storage above some of the the area where the vehicles would go, so that you'd have just more room to keep things, which we obviously need as much as possible and every square foot we can. Our team does a lot of work and uses a lot of material for it. Can you keep going, Jamie? More concepts. I shall also point out these, this presentation will be posted on the township website, so if anybody wants to look at this later, you'll be able to look at it in more detail. I can go one more, Jamie. And then, of course, we've got to get down to our cost estimates here, too. Bottom line, when we're looking at all said and done, we're looking at just under $30 million all in on this right now. And that's where we've been doing a lot of our estimating. We were talking about, you know, bond issuances and things like that, too. Any questions?
John, can you tell us? Thank you for this presentation. It's very informative. Can you tell us if this facility will have room for expansion? That is, within the the 10 acres, will we have room if in the future we need to expand some of the facilities?
The short answer is yes. We're not going to even build quite as much as is on there in the first round. We would have room to expand the buildings out to the side initially, and then we could relook at the circulation if we ever needed to do more. This area, and particularly the area going back to the north, has some very steep grade to it. So the rear would need about an eight-foot retaining wall, so we want to try to not dig in any further than that. We kind of want to get that that building footprint, the building envelope area really set. So the idea is that we leave enough room both for turning radius and to put more in here with that, you know, so we could put more structures on it without actually putting more paving on it.
So so this building we envision will will be sufficient for the foreseeable future?
Yes. Yeah, it it would cover everything we do now, plus some building expansion already with equipment we feel like we should have and facilities for the staff and possible expansion in the future.
And and once this is constructed and we move into it so forth, we we still have the properties that we're currently using for Public Works facilities, right?
Correct.
So we'll still have gravel and salt and other things stored?
No, we would move everything except for some stuff in the parks that's for that park. We store some things in it. Everything else would move here. Salt would be here, stone, gravel, all our storage of other materials.
What I'm hoping, Tessie, is that when this is done and Public Works moves in, we're having another conversation about what to do with those properties, that we're not using them for anything for operations because we can get it all here.
Yeah, I guess my point was we wouldn't still, you're saying we wouldn't still need them to store the sand and gravel and all that?
Correct. We we wouldn't need 917 anymore.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. One is, this wasn't a like a knee-jerk kind of decision, a lot of time, and in-depth analyzation went into this? I guess this whole process?
Absolutely. There were several years of work before I got on board, and then it's been at least another year of work with the architect, looking at the different scenarios after it had been boiled down to what acreage looked appropriate.
Okay, and based on all those years of work, this is the least impact, this would be the least impact on our township residences and businesses? Would it be the, I guess, the least impactful?
Absolutely. This keeps it the greatest distance from residences and businesses that would be impacted by it. The only one that would be close would be the rear of the Giants Foods.
Okay, and I, in your opinion, based on the years of work that has gone into it, this is, I guess, the the best or the most effective use of township funds?
Absolutely. There's no question in my mind. This sets us up for success for many years to come.
Okay. And Fred, just a couple of questions is beginning of the presentation, there were some needs or issues that were public presented that Public Works has presently. Would this plan address all those needs or all the issues that Public Works has?
Yes, this plan covers everything that we have problems with now and we saw in the future.
Okay, and would this change it? Would it make a significant impact, or would it be a good noticeable impact on the efficiency of the operations of Public Works?
Absolutely. Huge amount of difference, having everything right there to go out and get started and then returning all to the same place in the afternoon.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, everybody.
I have one last question, I guess, for Fred. So currently, we contract out a lot of the lawn cutting and so forth. Is there any anticipation that that would change in the future?
I don't think so, because it would be a matter of manpower. I mean, you'd have to hire significant more staff in the summer.
Okay, so it's not right. The reason we do it now is not because we're so scattered and...
It's not the cramped spaces. We just don't have a big enough staff in the summer to handle it.
Okay, fair enough.
Can I follow up on Jimmy's point that in the police department, we we are in our third parking lot of where we park police cars. we are in our third parking lot of where we park police cars since I've been here. We keep adding and moving personal vehicles further out into the parking lot. We have no room for a storage facility for a vehicle that can be locked. That was the shed that we put on hold for our accreditation standards. We need to have that type of facility. We currently practice, our training for our tasers takes place in the evidence room, in a closet, basically, because we had no place to do it. Our physical fitness and tactical and defensive tactics, we go to the high school and we rent their gym out to do that because we don't have any place to do that. I could keep going. We need, we need room. We both need room.
It sounds like we've needed this for quite some time.
It's, well, and our job has changed to where we have to provide more. Standards have changed, and you need a facility to do that, to keep up with those standards.
Has the township grown significantly in population since this building was first constructed?
I would say it's gained about 3,000 people, I would say, 4,000 people.
Yeah, that's a significant increase over those years.
Our police department went from 16 to 22. There's been a lot of changes.
Right. So we've just outgrown this facility for...
And we've remodeled here. We've remodeled here twice.
So it's fair to say that not only would this be a significant and noticeable impact for the Public Works Department, but it'd also be a significant and noticeable impact for the police department?
And I think I could then pass the microphone to Mimi, and the administration could talk about more room that they need for storage facilities. There's just nothing available. There's no storage.
Going on and on and on.
I could keep passing the microphone.
Yeah.
When was this building, when was this building built?
87, this building? I think it opened. And just, so right now, we have tentatively planned for 2026 a needs assessment for this building. The thought being, we've made it through, we're well into, maybe hopefully almost done, design for the Public Works Building, kind of a better idea of timing, make sure that's going ahead, all of that. And then next year, do a good assessment for what happens downstairs, which probably a lot of that's for the police department. And maybe some of it's just rearranging some things up here to give us some more storage. We are bit by bit moving things online, so that storage needs are going to change. But we want to, while we have some momentum going, even if not everything happens from that plan immediately thereafter, to come up with a plan and some cost estimates of what else is needed.
And the cost of not doing this now, we've already put in place our first bond issue, so we have that amount of money to secure the land. But the cost of not doing this now is going to be significant because there's not going to be open space that we need in this township if we don't go ahead and do this now. So I think this is really pressing to move forward, and I really appreciate the staff, all the hard work that's gone into Fred's evaluations and Mimi's and all the rest of the staff and John to bring this to this point of development. So I'm really excited about moving forward with this project.
I just wanted to add, too, I mean, we have other projects on hold, such as figuring out what the police department needs just for one parking space that's locked. We don't even have room for that. But if we weren't to go ahead with building the new Public Works facility, you could see, we need to do a lot of work at 917, we need to do work downstairs. We don't want to spend money on any of that. That's, you know, good money after bad. We'd rather build a new building, and if we're going to be putting money into this building, putting it in for something that's going to benefit the community for decades. But if we delay the project, at some point, things are just falling apart. We're going to have to put money into crappy buildings that we don't want to build.
That's not the best path forward.
This is something I think that, at least since I've been on the board, it's been a topic of conversation, and we did take it very seriously and do a significant amount of assessment and review and planning. And I think this is the culmination of it. So thank you, John, for putting that culmination together. And thank you, Fred, for you and your team for hanging in there while we did the assessment. All the Public Works guys, we know what you were battling, so we appreciate the fact that you hung in there with us. Are there any additional questions or comments from the board for John? Any questions or comments from the public? Thank you so much, John. Oh, I didn't see you, Rich, I'm sorry. You want to come up?
Rich Feligio. This has probably gone a lot of thought into this. What is the planning schedule? The resolution today that you're considering is acquisition of the land. What is the schedule moving forward on this, and how is it going to be funded? And I know you're talking about the budget. Is this worked into the budget this year, or is it next year?
So our manager can talk about it, but ultimately, it's going to have to be funded through bonds.
And we have already gotten some good funding.
Potentially state funding.
So state funding and state grants money, we already got...
As much as we're going to do, as we've done for the last few years, we'll get as much in grants as we possibly can. And there's a board outside, we have about $8 million in the last year or two in grant money. So we're going to keep looking for grant money. That's something that the current staff, they're dogging about. We'll keep looking for grant money, but it's not going to fund it all. That's the reality of it. We're not going to get $30 million in grants for this. So that's where the bonds come in. But to Mr. McNeely's point, the cost of not doing this is extreme. We've already lost out by not doing something over the last 10 years. This property that we're looking at, that is the subject of this resolution, has been sold twice. More than, the last time it was sold, it tripled the previous price. We lost out on buying that. We're having a piece of that. So we're going to pay more. Building costs keep getting higher and higher. The time to do this was years ago. We've got to do it now.
I don't disagree. I'm just trying to figure out the schedule.
Yeah.
So what is the plan in terms of, after the land acquisition?
I think Mimi's going to go into more detail, but just so you know, Rich, all of this presentation will be online and on the website for everybody to review and kind of look at and go into more detail about. But I think Mimi can give you a little bit more of an update as it relates to what the next steps can and would look like.
Well, the land acquisition is key because then we can start a more detailed design. As you saw during John's presentation, we've done a high level that could kind of go almost anywhere, right? We haven't spent a lot of money on that. Now that we have land, we'll start doing the preliminary design, which will take all of 2025, probably, but with the hope that in 2026, we're putting together bid documents and hopefully breaking ground. So I think the goal is that we've moved in by 2028, maybe a little sooner if all the stars align, but somehow they never do, so I'm going to say 2028.
The planning commission won't interfere with this.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the public? Do we still have any for us back to how our solicitor opened us up? We are back to the resolution that is before us. Do you have any wise words that you want to say, Neil, before we start?
Just to follow on John's presentation, this would authorize the filing of a declaration of taking for approximately 10.37 acres within the property located at 1201 Summie Town Pike. So that entire property would not be the subject of a condemnation proceeding, only 10.37 acres of that property.
Are there any questions from the board? Questions from the public? That I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-33, authorizing the filing and the declaration of the taking of approximately 10 acres part of 1201 Summie Town Pike. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is the consideration of a list of volunteers that have been identified to receive earned income tax credit for 2024. I believe the list of the names have been included in our board packet and have been included on the memo from our township manager as well as finance director. The board, we recently adopted an ordinance, and what this did was establish a volunteer service credit program up to $1,000 for the earned income tax paid by volunteers for the two fire companies that primarily serve Lower Gwinnett. The notarized list of lower Gwinnett taxpayers satisfied the criteria for Resolution 2023-16 that was required for the ordinance, and the list of the individuals are included. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? So once we approve this list, staff are going to give certificates to the volunteers. They can file when they file their taxes, they can notify Berkhimer and the Collector for Montgomery County Local Government so that they can receive their credit. I'd like to make a motion to approve the listed, the volunteers listed in the memo. Do we need to name them by name? Okay. From West Second Fire Company who are eligible for volunteer firefighter earned income tax credits. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is the consideration of our 2025 budget and tax rate resolution. As you remember, on our November 12 meeting, we authorized the advertisement of the preliminary budget. We received no comments from the public during the review period, and the budget, the draft budget, still remains on our township website. With that, I don't know if we have any wise words or anything that anybody wants to share? Any questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the 2025 final budget. We'll go to township. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great job.
Congratulations. Thank you. Next up is Resolution 2024-34. What this does is kind of realign some of the millage rates. It's approving the 2025 property tax millage, but there is no change to the rates as proposed in what's in our budget. And included in our packet are the property tax rates and streetlight assessments for 2025. And it says some resolves in it, and it goes through what that amount is. If you need me to read it, I can, but I think it's pretty straightforward. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-34, approving the 2025 property tax millage. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is the approval or the consideration of the invoice report for December 10, 2024. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? I'd like to make a motion to approve of the invoice report for December 10, 2024. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is a consideration, well, actually, the minutes from our Board of Supervisors meeting from November 26, 2024. Has everyone had a chance to review, or are there any questions or concerns around the minutes? No? Any questions or concerns from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the board of supervisor minutes from November 26, 2024. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Included in our board packet, I actually did not see them in our board packet, but they're supervisor liaison reports with no questions or concerns. Staff updates. Any staff have any updates? No staff have any updates?
So Eric Rudolph has been here a number of times talking about the sounds from the chiller at the middle school, so I just want to make sure you all know that township staff will be meeting with school district staff and Eric Rudolph and another neighbor at the end of this week so that we can all be in one room and everybody hear everything.
Thank you for coordinating that meeting and then filling that request for Mr. Rudolph and that neighborhood. Okay. Any additional staff updates? No? Okay, supervisor comments. Tessie?
Well, as always, I'd like to thank the staff for all the hard work. We're undertaking this very large project of the new Public Works Building. I feel very confident that our staff is handling this in the, you know, at the highest level of professionalism. And I'm very confident at the end of the process, we will have a building to be proud of and one that will serve us for decades to come. And so, again, I look forward to this process playing out. And just like to wish everybody happy holidays and thank the staff for putting up the decorations. Those are nice. That's all.
Jamie?
I'm going to echo what Tessie said. I'm really proud to be a part of this board and proud to work with amazing staff. We have lofty goals. And a lot of hard work goes into trying to bring those to fruition, and it doesn't go unnoticed, so we really appreciate it. We've achieved a lot of grant funding, and so we have to thank our county and our state and local reps for that. To help us fund these giant projects, we've got Public Works. We have a lot of park improvements coming down the Pike. So, you know, the comprehensive plan, lots of, lots of good things to come, and I'm really excited about it, and I appreciate everybody's efforts. Did that end, and happy holidays, everybody?
Jamie?
Really just echoing what everyone said. When you guys were talking about working in all the space, I just pictured you guys all like MacGyvers and figuring things out. So, but it is really amazing that you guys do, so thank you.
Yeah, I agree. Thanks to Melinda for the budget, John and Fred for the public works assessment, Paul and the police for everything you do, and Mimi and Michelle, obviously, and Jamie keeping us running, and happy holidays to everyone.
I'd echo everything that everybody said. But all of our staff would greatly appreciate it. We are taxing, we do have lofty goals. I think we wanted to accomplish a lot. I think we came here with the intention of getting things done, accomplishing things and making an impact, a positive impact in our community. I think we're all frustrated with how sad, how slow things sometimes go, but I think we can understand how hard everyone is working to try and get us there, and it's evident in every aspect of what we're doing. So we appreciate it tremendously. I'd also like to thank Neil for keeping us safe.
You're welcome.
No one ever thanks the lawyer. Thank you, Neil, for...
Yeah. But I mean, I can't, it's never, it never is, you can never thank the police and the fire company as often as we can, as well as our Public Works, because they're the face of the township quite often. But a lot of the work that, behind the scenes, from Michelle to Mimi and Jamie and all of the other staff and Melinda, my goodness, Melinda, and that budget. All of the work that you've done and John for putting on such a tremendous presentation and helping to clearly communicate some of the goals that we have and how we got to the point and making sure that everyone is aware. So just wanted to thank everybody tremendously. With that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Kathy.
Is there a second meeting? All those in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Anyone going to, are you guys going to go to this, the May, he said?